Good evening and of COVID-19. Remember, the three most important things you can do to protect yourself and others in the community are masking up, practicing social distance of six feet or more, and washing your hands regularly. These fundamental acts of social responsibility will help flatten the curve, keep ourselves and neighbors healthy, and keep our businesses open. Importantly, these measures show support for frontline and essential workers that serve us daily. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting, there are two ways to do so. One, if you joined the webinar on a computer or similar device, click the raised hand icon when the commission is discussing the agenda item in which you would like to speak. When it is time for public comment on that item, the clerk will unmute you. You will have two minutes to comment. And number two, if you did not log into the webinar, you may join the meeting by phone call. Call the number at the bottom of the screen. Enter meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press star nine on your phone when the commission is discussing the agenda item on which you would like to speak. Dialing star nine will let the clerk know that you would like to speak. When it is time for public comment on that item, the clerk will unmute you. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted. You will have two minutes to comment. And we call this meeting to order. Can we begin with a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Taggany. Commissioner Figaro? Commissioner Davies?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Vice Chair Mayer?
Here.
And Chair Taggany?
Here.
And I'll note for the record that Commissioner Visseid Elcock is absent.
Okay, thank you. And item number two is oral communications. Director Loyah, do we have any public comment that should be read before we start?
We do not. There are no attendees present.
Okay. And then we move on to our consent calendar. And the only item on our consent calendar are the minutes from our meeting on December 20th. I'm sorry, December 8th, 2020. If we have any, no corrections, then do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we do a roll call vote on that?
Commissioner White?
Hi.
Commissioner Davies?
Aye.
Commissioner Figaro?
Aye.
And Commissioner Barstow?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mayer?
Aye.
And Chair Taggany?
Aye. Thank you. And now we can move on to public hearings, of which we have none scheduled for the evening. So that moves us straight into business items, of which we have one. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yeah, just a very brief staff report. Tonight before you is the Planning Commission Annual Report for 2020. I put together a draft for your review tonight. And if you will approve it by motion and voice vote, then we'll forward this on to the city council's hearing on the 20th. And Chair Taggany or, you know, someone in your stead would then be there to present it. That'd be great. So I do have the annual report up for for your review here. And if the commission would like, we can edit and/or discuss any of the items on the annual report. And I'll edit them in real lifetime here so that you can adopt it tonight.
And so at this point, I think we are just looking for kind of a roundtable discussion on that. Does that sound right to everybody?
Yeah, absolutely. I think I've got a couple of hands raised, but I'd say just go ahead and round robin, jump in. If you have comments to make or would like to see edits, and I'll start making those as you agree to them.
Hi, I have a question and just a comment that might become an edit. And I mean, it all looks like what we did, and it all looks really good. One of the things I'm wondering is that on the 2020 goals and leading into the 2021 goals, here it says that the RFP for the infill plan includes the general plan updates. That's one E and then two F. And I'm wondering if you could explain a little bit about that, because that does feel to me a little bit like putting a cart before a horse. And I'm, I'm wondering, you know, the planning commission never sees those RFPs. And so I'm wondering if you can just explain how that works.
Sure. So the RFP for the general plan work, as well as the infill zoning that we're proposing, that we've been discussing for the last couple of years. And then in addition to that, the SEQUA document that'll be necessary to adopt those plans formally into the city's long-range planning repertoire was released on Friday. And, you know, just tactically, in order to have a fluid document, one that was prepared. And, you know, while the general plan, you know, elements need to be prepared in order for them to be consistent internally, and then to have the zoning, the new zoning adopted that's consistent with that. Once that consultant builds the, you know, the knowledge base of our community and has worked with staff, we just decided tactically it was best if one consultant did all of that work. And so we've released it as a single body of work, even though they represent different kinds of documents and will likely have different adoption dates. Ultimately, all of the work has to be conducted by January of 2023, when our grants that we received to do this work are starting to expire. And so there will be a hard end date when all of this work is completed. But the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan encompasses everything from the way that we've described it anyway, to the community to date. Includes everything from the housing element, which has been adopted, the market study, which we just received the final draft on, and we hope to have adopted in February. And then the general plan amendments, which will be fairly exhaustive, touching almost every single element of the general plan. Some of them, such as the infrastructure and land use and planning elements, which will have fairly comprehensive updates, since they'll be planning for another 20-year period. Other elements, like maybe the, you know, the open space element, which is still very relevant, may have a couple of added policies entered into it as we move forward, but won't require as comprehensive updates. So that's all included in this umbrella of the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan. And then the targeted infill zoning that we've been discussing at the Planning Commission and with the community as well, which includes a number of different efforts, one of which is the Arcata Gateway area plan, which will be more of a form-based code for high-density mixed-use development in that area, is also wrapped into the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan. So all of that, the second two pieces, the general plan updates, and then this targeted rezoning, the Arcata Gateway area plan, were released along with the SEQUA work as one RFP.
I'm wondering if there's a way to describe it, which, which doesn't give us the impression that the general plan updates are simply a little tail that's tagged on to the infill plan, because ultimately, it's actually a somewhat far, potentially more far-reaching set of updates and considerations. And it's, I think, not something that we should be seeing as a tag on. And, you know, in, in your 2021 goals, it doesn't necessarily appear that way, but certainly in the 2020 goals, it, it really does feel as though the general plan is updates are really tagged on to the infill plan in terms of the actual work that the consultants would be doing. I, you know, since we haven't seen the RFP, you know, we don't know how you've described that, but I would I would see it as unfortunate if the Planning Commission and the city council sees it that way.
Yeah, no, I think the general plan updates are an important next step. And if that hasn't been conveyed here, I'm very open to language. I mean, this is, this is your annual report. And so certainly, any edits that you'd like to make to try and strengthen or emphasize areas were, you know, I'm certainly open to.
I think one, one thing that might help would be to, on the Planning Commission goals for 2021, to move that two F review of the Land Use Code and General Plan up a little bit higher on that priority list. At the very latest, I think it should appear as, you know, B or C, rather than stuck down there at the bottom.
Okay, do you want it combined with B or next to B?
My, my perspective is that B and F should really be part and parcel of the same activity. But yeah, putting, putting that in there as B or putting it in as C after the infill plan, ideally combining the two of them, especially if staff and the consultants are seeing these two activities as, in fact, a single set of tasks.
Judy, may I ask, did you say D and F or E and F?
I, no, I, I said B, the infill plan, and F.
Okay.
Under the Planning Commission goals for 2021.
Yeah.
So right now. Either combine them or in some way. Yeah, we'll definitely bring the general plan updates up as more of a priority. And I understand that the infill plan has begun before these general plan revision activities have actually started. But if, if they're going to be done by the same consultants, and in fact, if the infill plan, which I think will have the status of a plan that will ultimately be subsidiary to the general plan, is going to take its proper place, I think we should do that in the goals as well. I mean, I, I realize that the infill plan is going to happen faster. And the general plan updates won't happen until 2023. But some, some way of making it clear that those updates to the general plan are maybe pervasive and that that infill plan is going to have to respond to the general plan and not the reverse.
So just, just to be clear, the the infill plan is sort of a shortened version of Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan?
Yep.
Because that's a mouthful. And that Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan encompasses all of this, the market study, the housing element, the general plan updates, and the targeted rezoning. So it's, it's sort of a the update of all of our long-range planning documents with an emphasis, I mean, the city's general plan currently, I would put forward that it already is an infill plan. It has policies in the open space and ag element that, you know, preserve those spaces or policies in the natural resources section that preserve the.
Right. I guess what I'm, what I'm seeing there is, is that if it's portrayed to the public and to the council that the general plan and land use code updates are more a matter of implementing the infill plan rather than the reverse, that kind of causes a bit of a problem. And of course, the general plan updates are also going to have to include some, some new elements that we haven't had before to address things like climate change and environmental justice. And so they're, they're somewhat broader. And I, I think that just by switching the order of these items, we can make it clear that that's the case. I think definitely review of the land use code and general plan in those goals should be either preceding the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan or coming immediately after it, or combining the two somehow.
So this language in this in B, I guess I'm trying to get to exactly what, what edits do you want to make? I think what I've heard so far is to move this here. Is everyone okay with that?
That, that helps, but I think it, it's important to make it clear that the, the infill plan does not mean that the general plan updates are now the, the, the tail.
So it's subordinate?
It's not, the infill plan, the infill plan and the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan is a concept. It's not a planning document. It's the effort that the city is making to address infill in all of its different planning documents. And so when we updated the housing element, it was really highly concentrated on infill. When we did the market study, the market study was specifically to identify what types of infill are feasible. And, and I understand you haven't seen the market study yet. You'll see it by your next meeting is my, my goal. But the, the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan has these two elements that concentrated on on infill that have been adopted. We have two other elements that, and of course, the housing element is a, you know, is, is an element of the general plan. But we have these two other pieces of work. One is a fairly intensive update of every general plan element, some more so than others. So that's one body of work. And then the targeted rezoning, which is another body of work. All of those fall into the umbrella of the infill plan. The infill plan is not a planning document that has something subordinate to it. It's a, a concept, a mindset that the city has been pursuing for the past couple of years to ensure that all of its planning document, all of its development that it's planning for is concentrated in, inside the city limits, within specific areas. But also to have plans or policies that are adopted that are related to preservation of ag lands and forest lands and so on and so forth. So it's the concept around which these planning documents are, you know, are, are focused.
Okay.
It's not a subordinate interior situation.
Okay, so my impression was that there was going to have been a document, the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan.
No.
If there isn't going to be, then I would recommend moving the land use code and general plan amendments forward above that to make it clear that the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan is the set of concepts on which the general plan amendments
You left this right here.
will rest. Yeah, I think that, I think that makes the, I think it makes it a little bit clearer, even if it doesn't reflect the actual order of work that staff is going to undertake and that the commission will. I, I, this is the first I'd realized that there was not going to be a Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan document per se. I, you, it's always been discussed as if that was going to be a document.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the confusion. I, we've tried to be clear about the, the concepts here and apparently haven't, haven't been. So does this, this work for everyone? Straw poll vote real quick?
It, it sure works for me. And I question if it's not going to be a, a plan that includes documents, is there a different word term that should be used for that?
You know, I'm going to strongly advise against changing the terms now. We've been using these terms for three years. I'm sorry if they've been a little confusing. I can share with you our term sheet. We actually have each of these terms defined and how we use them. And we've been consistently using them this way for three years. And so I'm not sure where the confusion happened. There is a, what we've historically referred to as the Gateway Specific Plan, which we're not asking for a specific plan in this RFP. There's a specific government code section that requires certain elements out of a specific plan. As we worked to develop the, you know, the concept, we realized that specific plan wasn't what we were really after. But we are after some targeted rezoning in this particular area that what's now being called the Arcata Gateway area plan will have some form-based code. So it's going to be a change in the land use code in that particular area, form-based code. You know, of course, we're, we're still, this is what, you know, the, the idea is that we're floating to the community. We haven't completed the, the outreach and engagement yet. Hasn't come to your body, you haven't reviewed it. But this is the work that we've been discussing and describing for two years, and that's why we're releasing the RFP now. And it is unfortunate that there's this confusion at this point, but but there are going to be plans. We've, we've described it as this umbrella of plan, that plans fall under. There are going to be these plans that are adopted that have real effect on the ground, general plan updates, new zoning ordinance that, you know, has more form-based code. And, and all of those things fall under the concept of Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan.
So there will be no specific plan for the gateway area now?
The government code defined specific plan would require that we not only identify, you know, the infrastructure that's necessary, which is a step we want to go through, but also to develop a capital improvement program and establish funding sources for that. And, you know, ultimately, it's, we, we achieve the same planning objectives without having to meet the government code for, for meeting a specific plan. And so I don't think that, you know, having the added effort placed into the infrastructure pieces associated with this, you know, garner a whole lot. And so we're, we're instead focusing on the design elements. One of the things that we heard through some of the larger scale developments that we've you know, taken through the planning process on a one-off basis over the last several years is that people are really thirsty for the ability to get in on the ground level, so to speak, to be able to provide input as to the design of, you know, the community before you're at the project level and to have that conversation with the decision makers and with, with the community, with staff. So that's, that's the main emphasis here. I think that's the, the, you know, that conversation, being able to see, you know, how do we, how do we meet our state requirements for density and development while still trying to honor the community's vision for, for aesthetics for the community, provide for the types of, you know, employment opportunities that we'd like to see into the future, while not overly, you know, emphasizing, you know, strict definitions of what people are doing inside their buildings. And to ensure that we respect and honor the, you know, the natural environment that, you know, really drives all of us to, you know, drives the quality of life for all of us.
Okay, that, that clarifies. So at, at present then, there, there is no specific area of plan, a specific plan being worked on in any part of the city? Is that correct?
We've described them as targeted rezones in our housing element. And a specific plan is a model for that. Let me try and pull up the.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I guess I'm, I'm concerned about the terminology because, you know, I, I think it's important to be very clear about what types of plans, processes, and concepts are all fitting together. So, you know, I, I do agree with Dan that if there's a way to talk about this as the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan concept in, in this document, that might help us all, because otherwise, we're expecting to see a document.
It's pretty clearly laid out in this RFP.
Right, which we haven't seen.
Absolutely. And, and so what I was going to say is I will send this out to you. It's pretty clearly laid out in the RFP. I will send this, I will get this in your next packet along with the, the definitions. And we can have, you know, we can spend some time working through this. And, you know, part of it, I'm sure, is that, you know, while we've been doing this for three years, you know, you see this every several months as we come in for an update and we talk about it, we go through it, your eyes glaze over as I give a big PowerPoint presentation. And, you know, here we are, I'm working on it day to day. And here we are, you know, releasing the RFP. And to me, it's just been, you know, the work that I'm doing. And so I'm, I'm sure that that's part of where the, the miscommunication comes in. But for all intents and purposes, you know, the area that we're talking about is still this, you know, for this particular targeted rezon is still this K Street corridor to Creamery District, wrapping back around to Seminole Boulevard. And so this is the Arcata Gateway area, the way that we've phrased the plan, the document that will come out that describes the zoning in this, is the Arcata Gateway Area Plan. That's going to be a plan that gets incorporated into our zoning. We'll have an element of the general plan that is specific to this area that identifies the, the policy emphasis in this area. And so in a lot of ways, it mirrors a specific plan. It's the exact same concept that we've been discussing. We're just not calling it a specific plan. We're not asking for a government code section specific plan out of it.
Okay. And, and in that RFP, which we haven't seen yet, I'm, I'm just wondering if we're going to be hit later on with the idea that because the RFP for the general plan review was part of this infill plan, if we're going to be told that there isn't budget to spend sufficient time or energy on things like the, the climate action responses or the environmental justice components?
They're all baked into this, this response. Respondents will have to address all of those elements that we've discussed. You'll note here that we have, you know, Senate Bill 1000, which is the environmental justice, and Senate Bill 379, which is climate adaptation. So we've, we've definitely, you know, we've, we've discussed these over the course of the last three years, everything, everything that we've talked about, all of the conversations that we've had at the, you know, study session level or, you know, informational updates through business items. All of that is baked into this RFP. Some of the language may have changed. We're no longer referring to it as a specific plan, but it's all, it's all baked in here. The scope of services includes, you know, the general plan amendments. And, you know, in our next meeting, we'll delve into that in more detail, as well as the Gateway Area Plan, which has a form-based code, and then the environmental review, so the SEQUA.
Okay.
So it's all going to be done co, you know, concurrently, so that you don't have the targeted rezon done before the general plan and vice versa. You know, they're going to be kind of rolling together, you know, a lot of the, the community engagement that's informing one, one, you know, set of policies will also help inform the implementation of those policies. Where we scatter these things and to which documents we scatter these concepts and this engagement and all. Where we scatter these things and to which documents we scatter these concepts and this engagement and all this this effort that we're doing. It really only uh, is relevant to those of us who who care about how our planning is structured. Um, what we're talking to the community about, we're not talking about general plan updates. We're we're asking them, you know, what's missing in your community, what what's, you know, what quality of life? You know, what is the, what does the forest mean to your quality of life? Having those conversations as opposed to, you know, we're updating the uh, you know, uh, open space and natural resources section of the general plan. Do you want to comment? So we'll bring this back. I'll share this with you on our next uh, uh, planning commission meeting as an agenda item, and you can dig into this. You'll have it. In advance so that you can read through the RFP and develop any questions you'd like to get a sense for where we're going with it.
Okay, thanks.
So, let's see.
Jump in whoever else has questions or comments.
So just to wrap this up, is this sufficient or is there additional language you'd like to see in these two uh, bullets to reflect? Uh, your interest?
I think that um, that addresses my concern. Um, you might, if 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 there's any way actually though to add the idea of strategic infill redevelopment plan. Concept that that might help, because whenever I see the word plan as a bullet item like that, I'm expecting a document.
Again, I'm reluctant to change the language at this stage. I mean, we've been using these terms for two years. If the commission wants to do that, then I'm I'm happy to throw a concept into this, but. Um. It's it's the language we've been using, and I I'd rather, you know, stick to it. It's already gone through one uh, iteration. The 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 overall concept of this has already gone through one change, and I I just feel like. This is what we've been talking with the community about. Um. I would recommend against it, but if the commission wants to, we'll we'll throw the word concept in there.
If if you could just add then a sentence saying that this plan will be, not just that the consultants will be working on it as part of, part and parcel of the same process. But that it will be incorporated in the general plan. Be- because when when I see the word, when I see it written like this, I'm seeing a separate process. And just making it clear that it's part of the general planning amendments would really help.
Tell me if I'm on the right track here.
That that helps a lot.
Ah, I can type. That look good?
Yeah, that 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 goes a long way. Thanks very much.
Um, and then do you want to keep this bullet item B, or did you want to incorporate it, or have we incorporated it now?
I I'd like to keep it up up upfront there because that that's a broader effort.
This this bullet item B is actually a holdover. I mean, this has gone on every single planning commission annual report for as long as I can remember, and the idea, the concept is that we're constantly reviewing. The general plan and land use code to make sure that we're doing updates um, uh, that are appropriate. And I think that, you know, basically what happened last annual report is that it got subsumed into the uh, to the sinfield planning effort, so. That was a holdover, but yeah, we can leave it. So is everybody pretty happy with uh, this, or any final comments on that?
I like it.
Okay.
I uh, question whether the uh, last sentence is really necessary.
Yeah, I think the only uh, reason I put that in there is to really emphasize like, this is another, why are we doing this? We're going through all this effort. We're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on this plan. Why? Um, and there's, there are lots of reasons why actually, but you know, one of them is because the general plan, even though we. Several years ago, removed the term, the 2020 from the cover of it, uh, it's still a, you know, planning document that goes through 2020. That's the planning period. But happy to delete that if if that's what the commission wants to do here.
I it's it's not a big deal, but also uh, uh, where it says the current general plan ends in December of 2020. It's either it either ended. Or uh, it's it's not so.
Um, ma- maybe you could explain that the current general plan was conceived with a horizon.
Yeah.
Until 2020 because that. It. You can even say was originally conceived because we did kind of extend it. Yeah. Does does that feel better, John?
Yeah, looks looks good. I I was just looking for a way to shorten it up so the uh, people who have to read this uh. Uh, can stick with it.
Right. No, that's something, there's something to that. This language is still a little awkward. Um, and so maybe it is best just to delete it out of here. Uh, it's not, doesn't necessarily carry the weight of uh, you know, an annual report per se, but.
Is, can I ask a question about this process? Is is this actually leg- legally the annual report? Um, that counts as the general plan annual report, or is it the com-? The commission as a whole annual report?
This is the commission's report to the city council to tell what you've been up to and to tell them what you'd like to do in 2021. This happens at this time every year in part because, you know, the planning commission, I'm sorry, the city council is preparing to go into budget season fairly soon here. Um, and it's it's just the, you know, timing when, you know, this this information is conveyed for the. Council to consider for that that budgeting process.
Okay, so so this doesn't stand in for the general plan progress report, which also has to be an annual document.
Yeah, no, I I submit that. That's an administrative task that uh, I do through our department annually.
Okay. Now, I like keeping it there, especially because we're going to have three new council members who aren't necessarily going to be. Uh, familiar with all these processes and whatever we can do to make it clear that this stuff has to be in their budget. Um, I thi- I think we need to do that.
Um, how long will it be till we don't even mention 2020 at all?
Um.
Not soon enough.
I mean, for this reason in particular, aside from all the others.
Well, you know, that's a, that's a really good question. I mean, you know, effectively, uh, general plan 2020 is not even a document anymore. It doesn't exist on the planet. We now have the Arcade General Plan.
Right.
Um, and, you know, and I would put forward the, you know, the idea that we. Moving forward, instead of calling the next general plan, this, you know, this gen- this updated general plan. Uh, general plan 2040, which I think will be the natural inclination since it's the next 20-year period starting, you know, now. Uh, that we just continue to call it general plan. Um, you know, we we have a 20-year planning horizon. We're going to discuss that in the land use uh, section in particular. We'll say, you know, that this. Uh, covers the 20-year planning horizon, but there are a lot of uh, elements in the general plan that really don't operate on that that scale. Um, on the one hand, you'll have, you know, for instance, the open space element, which for all intents and purposes was written in in stone tablets. Uh, and then on the other end of the spectrum, you have the um. Uh, the housing element, which is updated now every eight years, and so. And we're, we need to review and analyze the general plan on a five-year planning uh, cycle anyway, and so. Giving it an end date is just really, we're we're doing our um, you know, our successors a disfavor by giving them an end date, telling them you're getting this done by 2040. Because they'll be in this position where they're editing their sentence that was held over from last uh, annual report.
Right.
I had a a couple of other places where uh, I was confused by the dates. Two A. Uh, it says the commission would like to see the update to the LCP concluded in 2019.
Thank you.
And then, uh, let's see.
You would have liked to have, I'm sure. So say, so say we all.
Um. On two B, again, it it talks about the planning horizon for the current uh, general plan ends December of 2020.
Let's see, so we moved uh, F to, so two B was that, that was the one that we just updated, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was a one, that's in one B.
Twenty-one, okay. Okay, I'm just going to copy and paste the language we just wrote down here. Is this acceptable?
Sure.
And uh. Why is one B important to us at this point? Isn't this a past document? That's a question.
Um. This is, again, I mean, I, you know, these mirror oftentimes your your report on the work that you did, especially for lan- long-range planning documents. The report on the work that you did last uh, year is also a goal to finalize this year. And so they they just kind of mirror, the language is a little bit mirrored there.
Okay, so it's in reference too. All right. Anything else, John?
Not for me.
Anybody else? David, I'll throw out one uh, question. You kept mentioning it's not a specific plan. Is that a term that's going to come up on this term list that? Refers to things that do have documents associated with them?
Um. It it is, I think, on the term sheet because the term sheet was developed early on to make sure that we have consistent language throughout uh, this planning effort.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to understanding the terminology better.
I just realized I um, have a little bit of a glib uh, thing in here. I don't know if you want to retain this or try and make it more professional. I think this was um. Kind of a a quick thought.
I like it.
Okay, we'll leave it.
COVID happens.
Okay, so I'm going to call this one a final. Or adopted. Uh, assuming that you take action on that.
Can you change one more date up top there? That uh, 2021 or January 12th up top?
Thank you. Good catch.
Oh, and above that, annual report for 2021, right?
Um, this is actually your annual report for 2020. Uh, we made that change a number of years ago because it was always. Previously listed as the year you were adopting it, but you were actually reporting on the year prior, so um, so now it's reflective of the correct year.
So David, you're also looking for a motion to approve. Is that?
Motion to, motion to approve, a a affirmative uh, voice by the group.
Are we uh, ready for that? Is there any other discussion on this item?
I'll check and see if there's any um, uh, public attendance here. We have no attendance, so opening it for public comment is not necessary.
Okay. So it sounds like we're just looking for a uh, motion to approve.
I'll move to approve with the changes that we see in our screens.
I'll second it.
And uh.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have a roll call vote now?
Commissioner Davies?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Aye.
Commissioner Barstow?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Mayor?
Aye.
You're tagging me.
Aye. Motion carries. And David, did you say that that was on January 20th, but uh, city council?
January 20th, and if you can't make it, we can uh, Rochambeau offline and figure out who can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Um, so moving on from business items, correspondence and communications.
I have just one item. Um, the, just wanted to update you on some of the uh, outreach and engagement work that we're doing uh, for. Uh, this work that we just talked about, the strategic infill redevelopment plan. And navigate to our website. And we held a um, one of the uh, actually better uh, public engagement meetings that uh, I've been involved in. On December 17th, uh, sort of the last event that we did with our Institute of Local Government partners from the the Boost Program. Uh, they were assisting us over the last 18 months, helping to build capacity uh, and and uh, skills within our department. We had focused on uh, engagement specifically. Um, and the working with the Boost team at uh, ILG was just, you know, fantastic opportunity. Uh, really appreciated their support, and so it to sort of um, you know, set us off, we we held one last engagement. They helped us participate. They participated in, they helped us uh, organize it and and run it. Um, and we did uh, a visioning session, and it was really um, you know, it was really well attended. Uh, I think we had about 40 people that came. Uh, it was uh, you know, very um, low-key and uh, very participatory. Uh, we got great feedback from the community, from the folks that that uh, did attend. Um, and luckily because of Zoom, we were able to record the entire event, and so now that's up on our website. Um, and available for folks to review. Um, we're trying to expand our um, engagement types. I mean, I think that, you know, not everybody can jump on Zoom at the specified time. You know, one of the things that we were trying to do with our engagement was to diversify and make it more accessible to. Uh, to folks in the community, in particular, those were, you know, who were typically marginalized by, you know, setting a time, six o'clock at night, and they're trying to get the, you know, kids dinner and and, you know, juggle through. You know. Whatever they're trying to juggle through to get their their lives going. Um, and so, you know, when COVID hit, a lot of those plans where we were going to go, you know, do meeting in a box, we're going to go out into the community, we're going to meet people where they're at, where they were at. A lot of that engagement we did through the the housing element, it was fantastic. I mean, it was invigorating to get out there and be with people and and engage with them on the ground. COVID hit and everything changed. We weren't able to do that anymore, and so we've been really strategizing for how do we expand our engagement now? Well, one of the things that we're doing with this December 17th meeting is we're going to take it and we're going to dub it down into, mix it down into sort of like a. You know, 30-second infomercial on what we did. We're going to make a five-minute soundbite. Uh, so that folks can, you know, get the main points in just five minutes, if that's all they have. We're going to make a five minute soundbite uh so that folks can, you know, get the main points in just five minutes if that's all they have, they have to, to uh, you know, contribute. And that's hopefully a teaser to listen to another version, which will be a more mixed down version. Uh, the approximate hour and a half meeting that we had, you know, mix it down to about 45 minutes. So somebody can go back and experience that engagement, participate again through uh a survey or, or some type of a portal that we'll set up to capture that ongoing uh engagement. So what we're really trying to do is to transition our uh, our electronic media into enduring engagement pieces that we can then uh release, you know, in different languages. And so one of the things that we're trying to do with this one is to translate it to Spanish so that we can have the same meeting in real time in Spanish, but to have the main content translated in advance and recorded in advance so that we can focus on the participatory work, the breakout sessions, the, you know, the, the you know, on demand surveys and that sort of thing. And we'll have another set of enduring engagement, but that one will be in Spanish or it'll be bilingual because um, I don't speak very, I don't speak Spanish very well, and so we'll be using an interpreter. Um, so there's a, just wanted to share with you the, you know, that we're really starting this, this work. Um, one of the uh, one of the uh activities that we're asking for, asking the council to consider for the CB23 funding that's coming through the Community Development Block Grant, was based on the CARES Act funding, is to uh break off about $50,000, $75,000 to do this kind of engagement, to be able to hire the people that will be able to make the, you know, the mixtapes for us so that we can send those out to the community and uh, you know, use this new type of engagement that we really were not expert in. Uh, and we don't really have the resources to do otherwise. We're going through this, this period right now where we're developing these plans for the next 20 year period. It's vital, it's critical that we have uh, you know, real robust, in-depth community engagement in these. And so um, so that uh council's going to uh look at that on, on January 20th. Uh, we've already had the scoping meeting for the, for the CARES Act funding. They're going to look at it and authorize an application on January 20th. We're hopeful that they'll, they'll include that as one of the um, one of the activities. Um, we'll be doing many more of these. We've got an objective to set at least one a month. Took a little break in January because of the, the holidays. We're going to start our next one in February. We'll make sure that you have uh, you know, the information on when that event is happening. Obviously, we want to avoid any Brown Act violations, but if you attend, um, you know, as a public member or if you attend, you know, stay in the background, then that's, that's totally fine. Um, if you do plan on attending, let's have follow-up conversation to make sure that we can uh avoid any kind of uh perception of prejudice for future decisions. Uh, but we're really excited about it. So I will see if I can navigate to the link here and I'll put that up just before we end on the third of the planning commission communications.
So David, that'll be a Zoom link that you're going to forward to all of us? Is that correct?
What I'm going to send you now is the link to our uh Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan page where uh where all of the um where all of this information is being housed.
Okay.
Uh, and then as the new events come forward, uh, we will uh invite you to those. Make sure that you know when they're happening. So here's our, our main page. This is currently the landing page. One of the things that we'd like to be able to do with the uh, the CARES Act funding is to hire a company. There are companies out there that do this for jurisdictions. They basically market your information, they collate it, they curate it. Uh, they take care of all the media blasts, the social media, you know, everything is, is uh kind of built in. There are surveys and all these kinds of things. So we're looking into that, that type of um landing page for this information eventually. But right now we've got, um, if you just Google Arcade uh Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan, this is the one that'll pop up. Or if you want to scribble this 896 slash uh strategic dash infill dash redevelopment dash plan, that will also get you there. Um, and again, this goes into a little bit more detail about, you know, the relationship amongst the actual plans. Um, there's the community vision statement as it's currently adopted in our general plan. Uh, and then the community visioning session. This is the full visioning session here, not the, the mixtape version. So uh, we'll be working on that uh soon. Um, so yeah, just wanted to make sure that you, you knew about this uh engagement. I also want to give a shout out to not only the ILG and the Boost team, but uh Dila Freitas, our senior planner, who uh led the charge on this engagement and really did a lot of the labor to, to pull this together and pull the people and the uh, you know, the resources. She just did a fantastic job and, and um, uh, and it showed in the, the community engagement. So certainly, you know, go back if you didn't attend. I know some of you did. If you didn't attend, go back and listen to this. Uh, uh, and, and, you know, hear what the community had to say uh and share it with your friends.
David, I had a question. Did I understand that we will be doing more of these in the future, just like we did?
Absolutely. Yeah, we're going to take up uh each topic um through the, you know, as we're doing the general plan updates, we'll be taking up topics that are relevant to the general plan. Um, uh engagement and continuing that. Um, the community visioning, uh, what we are planning on doing with that is kind of keeping it open. You know, we don't want to say, okay, well, we had a meeting. We had a meeting back in December 2020 and now we know what our vision is. You know, we want to take this and as I mentioned earlier, make it sort of an enduring engagement, something that people can go back to and continue to participate in. So that as we go through this general plan update process, people can continue to reflect back on the vision statement and make sure that it's reflective of the community now. Um, you know, I, you know, I think that everyone will see something in that vision statement that, you know, that they, they uh see reflective of themselves, but I also think that there's probably some gaps in there. Um, and so we'd like to, you know, through this process, be able to identify the gaps and not have it closed until we're ready to adopt the general plan.
So I love the idea of doing the like 30 second infomercial in the five minute, which is going to be the soundbite. I'm wondering if maybe we could do like a teaser, so as opposed to after of wrapping it up and giving people a compartmentalized, this is what happened, but maybe something to entice them to come so that we have, I, I mean, 40 was awesome, but even better if we got 80. I'm just wondering if that's something that could be looked at beforehand.
Absolutely. No, that's a great idea. That's again, one of the things too that we would um benefit from hiring one of these companies is they do a lot of marketing. But the way that you're talking about it is exactly how Dilo and I were brainstorming about it the other day, thinking about it as a marketing campaign and really trying to get out there and uh, you know, have people want to be engaged instead of, you know, going through and prying people, you know, off their couches, I guess, into their, you know, kitchens so they can turn on their computers at this point. But um, but yeah, that's, that, that's a really good idea.
Anything else on that topic? Any other communications from the city?
Not at this time.
Okay, we've had some super high tides this week. Was there a city event based on King Tides?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, I forgot about our King Tide event. Things are just rolling, you know, already. Um, we had our King Tide event today. Uh, Susan Dill McCarthy in our office put together a fantastic virtual King Tide event. Um, and uh, you know, we had, had a couple of community members there who, uh, one of the things we did was just to walk through, you know, what influences the tide. So, you know, um, Susan took that part. She also talked about, you know, what the project is that we're asking people to do this resident site, science project where, you know, you're basically going out and documenting the tides. And then I talked a little bit about where our uh, you know, our policy development or sea level rise adaptation is. Um, and it was uh, it was also recorded and will also be on our uh sea level rise page, uh, so you can go back and listen to that. But it was great because we got good input from folks. Um, uh, you know, one of the things I asked people to do is to, you know, think about what their, their assumptions about uh sea level rise response are now. Uh, you know, as we walk through the talk, you know, kind of reflect afterwards, you know, has, has anything changed? Or, you know, have you reinforced your ideas? You know, are there comments that you can make to, sorry, my lights are going off. Comments you can make to address uh the policy in more depth. And so through that engagement, we had uh, you know, several really great insightful comments. My uh light sensor can't see me from my desk.
Energy saver.
Absolutely.
Okay, and you had an 8.5 high tide today, I think, right?
8.6, I believe, at Arcata Bay, at the Arcata um marker.
Yikes.
And it was uh, you know, dead calm, so we didn't have any wind wave action. Um, we didn't have a, you know, the, the rain was happening obviously uh for most of the day, but I don't think we got substantial amounts of rain to cause much of a pileup. So it wasn't as dramatic as prior years, but it was great that, you know, lots of people are out there doing it. Um, we're asking people to cross post on the uh Coastal Commission's uh King Tide Event webpage as well as to send them, send the photos to us as well, so we can get them on our story map as well.
And you're saying that we can view that at your um sea level rise portion of the city website?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can uh navigate to that real quick too.
Well, he's looking for that. Are there any uh commission communications?
Um, yeah, I, I just had some questions. Um, we've got three new council members coming on out of five. And I'm, I'm just wondering if city staff is working with those new council members to kind of bring them up to speed about what um planning stuff is happening in Arcata and, you know, what planning stuff uh looks like from a state level and just some basic education um on planning with those new council members who are coming on fresh and um, you know, with they, with them being the majority on the council now um to try and get some sense of what is planning doing in Arcata?
Yeah, um, absolutely. Um, so just real quick as an aside, the, again, if you Google Arcata and sea level rise or Arcata and King Tide, it'll take you to this page. Uh, and again, this is where that engagement will be posted. This is also where, you know, information from past engagements is also located. Look, there's a picture from back when we could sit next to each other. Um, so the uh, to answer your question, Vice Chair Mayor, the answer is yes, we absolutely are. Um, we had uh an orientation with the, the prospective council members before the election. Uh, we provided them materials, some, some written materials uh after election. Uh, and then there will be uh, you know, a series of, of orientations, including a study session on the 21st. Uh, where we'll be going over community development, uh engineering, and I believe um environmental services. Uh, so we'll be talking at that meeting, obviously, and I mean, there's, there's a lot to learn. There's a lot that's preceded um them and, and I know that they're all plugged in and they've been, you know, paying attention. But, you know, getting down into the nitty gritty is definitely, um, you know, there's a learning curve. And so um, you know, city manager has been very thoughtful and mindful to, you know, to make sure that there's plenty of uh resources to make sure that they understand, you know, what's, what's gone before, you know. And at the same time, you know, I think we all just need to understand that, you know, it's a new council and may have new policies, new direction, new, new goals. And so we're, we're trying to um, you know, respond to that as well.
I'm sure they're all watching this meeting tonight as well, right?
I'm, I'm sure they are. They're just absorbing it like a sponge.
All right, anything else?
Nothing for me.
Nope, seeing none, let's adjourn.
Okay.
Good night all.
Thanks, everyone.